Hi Catherine.
Hi Yancy.
How are you?
Good and you?
Thank you. Trying to stay cool.
Say again?
Trying to stay cool, it's still hot.
Yeah, that is a challenge. It's been brutal, day after day.
I can't wait for the summer to be over. I'm not a summer person.
I usually like it, but I don't know, this summer it's different.
I think between the pandemic and everything else, it's just been definitely not enjoyable.
Right. What happened?
Hey Bill.
You guys, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
And Bill.
Hey Catherine. Hey Wayne. Hey Wayne, how are you?
Well, how are you? Wow, two meetings in a row. This is amazing.
It's fixed, it's still fixed.
Don't jinx it.
Alright, no more remarks.
Hi Wayne, how are you?
I'm good.
What happened to me? See that? Look at that, I just disappeared.
We can see you. We see you.
Hey, my screen just... Oh, okay. See?
You have to take off the glasses to see, I see.
That's it, yeah. Not fun getting old.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah.
There is an alternative, Bill. So, let's stay with this club.
Yeah, I'm okay with this.
Hi Wayne.
Hi Amanda, how are you?
I'm doing nicely, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Yancy?
Yep.
What day was that those are claims on?
Which, what do you mean?
The packet that you sent me. Somehow I can't locate, I printed out something, but I can't locate the...
I sent it out to you on Friday.
What was it?
Friday was the... The 24th.
Friday?
Friday, the 24th, yeah.
Hold on one second. Hey, how are you? Terrific. Can you send that to me?
Entire packet?
I just, somehow I don't have it here. Must have been deleted or something.
In like forty years, when you're watching Survivor, Jeffrey and it's one of the clues will be a... Mr. Cobb, whenever you're ready, Mr. Cohen will be running about twenty minutes late, finishing up another event. Whenever you're ready, we have a quorum.
Two seconds and I'll be there. You ready?
Yes.
I call the city council meeting of July 28th, 2020, to order at 7:31. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the city clerk please read the statement regarding the open public meeting act?
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the record in the Star Ledger and advertised in said newspapers on January 17th, 2020, posted on bulletin board in a municipal building and has remained continued. This is under the statutes.
Somebody put their phone on mute, please.
I got it. Notice of amended meeting date was advertised in the record on July 10th, 2020. A copy of this notice is and has been available to the public in his on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Please also take notice that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6 at seek, and in consideration of executive order number 103 issued by Governor Murphy on March 9th, 2020, declaring a state of emergency and a public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, the City of Englewood does hereby notify the public that to protect the health, safety and welfare of our citizens, while ensuring the continued functioning of government, the city council meeting scheduled for July 28th, 2020, at the Englewood Municipal Court, 73 South Van Vren Street, Englewood, New Jersey, 07631, will be held virtually and telephonically via Zoom only. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by calling or clicking on the link on their website or by dialing 9292056099 followed by passcode 87456230662 at 7:30 PM. Individuals calling into this number will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. Breakout room will be used if closed session is required. Proper notice had been given, the municipal clerk is directed to include statement in the minutes of this meeting.
Will the city clerk do the roll call, please?
Councilman Cohen, still not here, he is running late. Councilwoman Glenn?
Here.
Councilman Hamer?
Here.
Councilwoman Rosenberg? Council President Cobb?
Here.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wildson, City Attorney Bill Bailey, and also, I believe, sitting in for the interim city manager is Greg Farinback.
Next business order, resolution 16207-28-20, approval of minutes. Need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes. Next, resolution 16307-28-20, approval of bills and claims. Need a motion and a second?
Move that bills and claims in the amount of 452,722 and 98 cents be approved.
Second.
Yancy, is Mr. Kaufman here?
I believe so.
Yes.
I think we had a request and from the last meeting about the bills that, bills that we had acquired or accumulated for the COVID. Do you have a total number for us? I believe we, that was an ask last time.
The what? The COVID or the COVID?
COVID. COVID-19.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a note, I'll email it to you tomorrow. I'll email you all the expenditures that we've had.
Yeah, I have a question also on page four of four. And it's with the AT&amp;T mobility. We have eight thousand three hundred and two dollars and seventy-seven cents. That seems a bit high, on the high end. Need to get back to me on that as well?
Yeah, I could, I mean, I could check now, I could do a vendor history and check to see what the monthly is, or where I could get back to you.
Well, you could get back to me, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine, if that's what you choose. Yeah, just, just because I, you know, and I see these things, you know, it seems a little bit more than it has been in the past. Maybe there's a reason for it, we just, we just need to know. And then I see, I guess, I know we had some work done with the pools and I see seven thousand and I see seventy-five hundred. These are bills that, I guess, are coming due now, that were acquired from the beginning of the pool.
Yeah.
Opening up, is that, is that what we're getting right now?
Yeah, it was for the, it was for the summarizing.
Yeah, yeah.
Of the pool, yep.
No, okay. Alright. Does anybody else have any questions about the bills and claims?
Nope.
Roll call. Yancy, please.
Want to confirm, Councilman, still not here. Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
The President Cobb?
Yes. Next up, ordinance, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none. Next is ordinance for introduction, first reading, ordinance 2003. I'll ask the city clerk to read it in, the title.
Yeah, it's an ordinance amending chapter 286, noise to incorporate the New Jersey Environmental Protection Department Model Noise Ordinance.
Okay, next.
Motion and second to introduce.
Excuse me?
Need a motion and second to introduce.
Yep. I have a motion and a second to introduce.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Question?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hamer.
Mr. Bailey, if you don't mind, would you just talk us through the high points on this ordinance and the resolutions that will accompany it to, you know, ensure quality of life?
Yes, sir. So, the state has a model noise ordinance, which it has issued. Does it in conjunction with the environmental protection. So, what's before the governing body tonight for introduction is to introduce for a public hearing on August 18th, whether or not the city would like to adopt the model ordinance that the state promulgates. If the city adopts this ordinance, it doesn't have to go back to the DEP because it's already been approved by them. If the city were looking to modify the ordinance or otherwise update the existing ordinance, that would require, before introduction, presenting it to the DEP, they have to review it and advise if the changes are acceptable. If we go through this process, what this does is we can at least get this ordinance in place, which updates our current ordinance, which is quite old. And this will, I believe, put better controls on noise issues and stuff that are experienced throughout the state by various municipalities. If this was introduced and adopted, it can then be amended. Any amendment would then go to the DEP, but pending that, at least this would be on the books and would update the current ordinance. It updates decibel levels, hours, things like that. One question that has come up has been with respect to how it impacts construction. The city has a separate ordinance that deals with construction hours of operation and requires contractors to register and what have you. Those timeframes would stay the same. That too can be amended if the city wishes, that can be changed as well. But what this is designed to do is at least get this in motion to update what we have, which is somewhat antiquated and is on our books right now. And in addition, there was discussion about a representative from the Board of Health Police Department getting certified as noise specialist to, the city can better enforce the regulations in terms of readings, if there's violations, after-hours, things, things at certain days that can't be done. So, it's a step in that direction. Again, this is for introduction, the public hearing would be the 18th of August.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cobb, there was a roll call needed.
I had a question, just to follow up on what Mr. Bailey said. So, Mr. Bailey, can you clarify, just because it was some discussion at one of our last meetings, the noise ordinance, if we adopt it, does not affect the hours where people can do outside work? Is that correct or incorrect?
That's, the hours they can do outside work is governed by ordinance 172, specifically, I think it's dash eight, that deals with an application process where they have to register with the building department, which includes time frame. So, that ordinance is still in effect. Many municipalities, in fact, there was discussion, I think it was Tenafly, that has a similar situation where they adopted the state's model ordinance, yet they have the other ordinance that specifically pertains to construction activities and the dates and times in which that can be, those activities can be performed. That too can be modified if the council wants to change those dates and times, and that's a separate ordinance, however.
Thank you.
Roll call, Yancy.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes. Next, we will move for public comment on agenda items. 164, 165, 166, and 167, 168, 169, 170, and 171. We have a motion to adopt resolutions by unanimous consent. Or does anybody have any items they'd like to pull? I know I do.
Point of order. Think we were checking to see if there was any public comment.
Okay.
Just on those resolutions, right?
Right, right.
So, for the public, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand at the bottom of your...
They have two minutes, name.
There's a, there's a reactions button, just press on that, there's a wave hand. Just press on the hand, that raises your hand, and that lets me know if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question on any consent agenda item. That's, that would be the resolutions. Diane Jansen has raised her hand.
Yes, hi, Diane Jansen, 589 Richland Terrace. I'm wondering, for landscapers, is that covered under this noise ordinance? And what days and times does this ordinance cover for landscapers? I'm particularly concerned about landscapers on weekends, on both Saturday and Sunday, and even, they start sometimes before eight o'clock. So, I'd like to know what this ordinance covers, thank you.
But Diane, right now, we're only covering the resolutions on the agenda items right now? Then we could come back, you can ask that question in open, public session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was incorrect, thank you.
Right now, we're just on the resolutions.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry to be...
That's okay, that's okay.
And members of the public, if anyone has any questions on the resolutions on the agenda, please press the reactions button and wave hand. Go to the next screen, just in case somebody...
Nobody?
Nobody, no.
Yancy, I would like to pull 164, 165, and 166. I'd like to vote on those independently. Or we can vote on all three of those together. But probably preferably independently, that's what I'd like to. So, 167, 168, 169, 170, and 171, we can vote on those right now?
Move to adopt by unanimous consent.
Second.
Are you the second, Mr. Cobb? Are you asking for a second?
I'm the second.
Want to do a roll call?
Roll call, yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg? Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Sorry, wasn't off mute, yes.
Thank you. Council President Cobb?
Yes. 164, I would just like, I'd just like to make comments on Lieutenant General William Earl Brown. Was a native of Englewood, and, you know, he rose to the ranks of Lieutenant General, which is, that means that you had to be promoted to those ranks by the President of the United States, so, and it's an honor, to honor him. He was somebody who grew up on, on William Street, and if you read his bio, you will see he had quite a career. So, I take my hat off and salute him and his family from us. 165, and 165, I think it speaks for itself, and Juneteenth, the work that Joe Hoyle and Jabari Society has put together with this, and now supporting Steve Sweeney in him making this a state holiday. I think that that's something that we should support, and hopefully we will. And 166 is the Black Lives Matter, supporting the Assembly on passing, on passing that legislation as well, and led by Gordon Johnson and others. So, I just wanted to recognize those independently, and we can hopefully vote on these right now.
I just wanted to confirm, Mr. Cobb, you wanted to do them individually or all together?
We can do those three together.
All together?
Yes.
Move to adopt resolutions 164, 165, and 166. By unanimous consent.
Ready, yes. Roll call.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. Next, we have communications from the mayor and council. Mayor Wilds?
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I hope this finds everybody here well and safe, although unorthodox through Zoom session. I'd like to thank our police chief, our fire chief, our health director, our head of public works, our rec department, Yancy, our city clerk, for the literally months and hours upon hours of dedication that everyone's doing, including our council president and so forth. We are now meeting twice a week rather than every single day since COVID came out, and be rest assured that every and all issues come out and are resolved and discussed at great length. There isn't any doubt in my mind that the directors and the chiefs and everybody love the City of Englewood and are doing everything to keep everybody safe. I issued a proclamation last month for LGBTQ, Pride Month, we raised a flag in the library. Happy birthday to about fourteen-hundred-and-one registered voters in the City of Englewood, trying to make a lot of phone calls, since I'm home these days, and special birthday each time we ascend, especially in the pandemic. My heart goes out to the residents of Rock Creek and the second ward, there was a shooting earlier this week, and the police chief and the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office is actively investigating that as well as the other police and gun activity that we had in the fourth ward earlier in the month. Congratulations on promotions, Englewood Police Lieutenant Kenneth Landell Schmidt, Englewood Police Sergeant Carlos Marte, and Englewood Police Sergeant Barry Miller, making his father, a former captain, very proud in memory. To Scott Reddine, I appointed him as co-chair of the Environmental Commission. I am going to be making Jack Silverman a co-chair of the Environmental Commission as he was vice chair, and Chelsea Gleis is going to go back to the regular membership as she does not have the time right now to continue leading the Environmental Commission. I'll send a notification in the next few days. Believe it or not, in the middle of a pandemic, we're still welcoming businesses. Thank you to Zula Mediterranean, to Delhi Express. Tomorrow, I'll be cutting another one on Palace State Avenue. I invite the entire council and residents to join us. These are pioneers that despite difficult times are still investing in the City of Englewood, and we have to do everything to lead the way for them. We had a mobile COVID testing on July 14th. I'm indebted to the Bergen County Executive for facilitating that. I participate in active phone calls with all the mayors of Bergen County, the executive, the governor's office, for heeding the calls and the interest that residents have, and so forth. I sadly memorialize the memory of Englewood Housing Commissioner Ray Aspenwell, who passed away on June 29th as well. So, tennis and basketball reopened in July 6th, we gave a fair mark, opened on July 13th. Bergen Street Municipal Parking, outdoor dining is robust. We urge you to patronize the businesses in our city. They need the help. When we were there, when they were there for us, we need to be there for them. I've had the privilege in the last five, four or five weeks to walk with Ainsworth Minot, who's leading a peaceful protest in Black Lives Matter. It's every Saturday at McKay Park. I urge you to join us. People from my synagogue have begun to join me on Saturday. It is mind-blowing, inspiring, and I'm learning. I'm learning history like I never had to... I never had appreciated it, and these conversations are happening, I'm participating tomorrow at the Bergen Family Center with the racial injustice group of children from all walks of life in our city, and I'm really proud of the progress that our city has made, and Ainsworth as well, I will be taking him forward to the Fire Department, I met with him and our police and deputy chief, and I'm very proud of the work that's developing. Many weddings, love is flourishing, there is now a backlog of people, you can get a license through Zoom, a lot of interest in the last 24 hours in Johnson Avenue, the sidewalk, as I understood it, there was a robust request, and it was approved, and it required more funding, and the council approved it, there was somebody who came up recently with concern for the trees that would be removed, trees need to be removed to put in proper drainage and a proper sidewalk, and then our city namesake trees, Englewood, will bear new trees, we will plant new trees for another generation. But I understand that this important sidewalk was already approved, and I urge the council to continue it, and for Cheryl, and for Charles, who were shepherding this along to see it through. Farmer's Market every Friday, ladies and gentlemen, from June 5 until October 30. I had a chance today to congratulate and visit Chef Dion at the church in town, who is doing single-handedly God's work in giving food out to those in need, also to the family promise of Bergen County that's done nearly 20,000 meals and so forth. You can follow up with me on every and anything that's going on in the city, every Friday at 11 o'clock with Coffee with the Mayor, I want to thank the library for hosting me on their Facebook and the Zoom, where I go in greater detail on what's permitted, and I thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes, good evening, everyone, thanks for attending this meeting. I join with my fellow Americans in mourning the passing of John Lewis, it's very sad to see such a vibrant personality and statesman no longer with us. May he rest in peace. I'd like to commend Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez for calling out her male colleagues' vulgarity. It was quite a scene that was relayed to us, and it was quite an outrageous scene. The vulgarity has been used for decades to marginalize and diminish women. Women make up more than 50% of the United States population, and women are more than 50% of Englewood's population. To ensure a true representative democracy, women must have a seat at every table. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Good evening, and thank you to everyone who is attending and committed to being involved in the process in Englewood, it is not easy, and it's still important to have all of the difficult conversations that we're having in the most productive way we can. I want to say a few thank yous, I want to thank everyone in Englewood who has been feeding people. Your efforts are incredible, they're saving people's lives, and we really truly appreciate you, and we won't stop working on making sure that you have the access to the food and the funding, and the help that you need to get the meals to the people that need them, thank you for that. I want to also thank everyone who has been supporting the almost weekly Black Lives Matter protests in Englewood. It's so important that this doesn't become just a one-time thing, and so your perseverance is making a real statement. I also wanted to thank the team that has been meeting daily or a few times weekly to make sure that the Englewood residents are healthy and safe and are protecting us. Unfortunately, as was mentioned, we had yet another shooting in Englewood, we have an excellent police department, and they recognize that we should never be complacent, and we, as Englewood, as the police department, will continue to grow and make Englewood even safer. And I just want to thank them for protecting us every single day. Lastly, as many of you have noticed, many of the traffic projects are moving forward, and I am going to receive an update on many of the items that had been put on hold when the pandemic started, by the end of the week, I believe, and I will be able to send out a meeting invitation and agenda, everyone is welcome to join, I would encourage each of you who has traffic concerns to reach out to your council representatives, I am the council liaison, so I am happy to bring any council representatives' concerns, or any individuals' concerns, to that meeting as well. And again, all of Englewood will be invited, it will be virtual, and I will send out the dates and the agenda for that meeting in the coming days. So wishing you all a peaceful and healthy rest of the summer, and a safe rest of the summer, and thank you again for joining.
Councilman Hamer?
Evening all, thank you for joining
Wait, wait, I can't hear you, you gotta speak up a little bit.
Is this any better?
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, thank you for joining us on a steamy and sultry summer evening. Please, please be careful, please be safe, 90 degrees doesn't fit well with virtually anybody, so I love summer, and I'm sure most of you do, but please be safe, and with the pandemic that we're still in the midst of, don't feel that, because the numbers have fallen off a bit, that we're safe now. Continue to practice as much as you can, wash your hands, cover up, wear masks, and do everything you can to keep the numbers down, this has been a tragic time all across the country, Bergen County was particularly hard hit, and, you know, I don't wish any of that on anyone, and hopefully our numbers will continue to fall. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, on next Wednesday, the 5th, we're going to have, Councilman Cobb and I are hosting a town hall, and frankly, this hopefully will be the start of many of the conversations that will impact the city of Englewood, from a budget standpoint, from a quality of life standpoint, and we have to be different. This pandemic has shown us that things are changing and have changed, and some of it will never go back to the way it was. So these conversations will begin, and if this is not a one-time thing, it's not a one-subject town hall, and it'll be over and done with, the issue that we're going to be talking about is policing, and it's an opportunity for you to hear from the state attorney general, the Bergen County Sheriff, our assemblyman, Gordon Johnson, and our police chief and deputy police chief, Larry Suffren, and Greg Hollstead, respectively. So we hope that you'll join us, the notices have started to circulate, and we hope that so, be safe, wash your hands, cover up your nose and mouth, and enjoy the summer to the extent possible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. The Councilman Cohen join us yet? Maybe not.
No, not yet.
Okay, then I'll go, I just want to thank everybody for attending, you know, participation is the key to getting the information you need, but also touching each one of your elected officials here that represent you, so they can hear what you're saying, and they can, you know, try to attempt to address your issues or concerns. And remember, I always tell you, encourage you, check the website, the website has a lot of information, and a lot of accurate and factual information, that will be the thing. As Councilman Hamer mentioned, we will be having a town hall, and really, the purpose is, we are concerned about the safety for the residents in the city of Englewood, and we believe this is an opportunity from state, from a county, and a local level, to ask the question of what these folks plan to do, and how they're going to work together to make sure that we get the services that we're expecting from them as well. And there's more to come on that, but that's the start of the beginning of town halls, you know, there's also an opportunity for other members to hold town halls as well as they see fit, I think that that would be important, they may touch items and topics that are brought to them, so I think that there would be some value with that. Also, I would encourage people to reach out to their elected officials if there are items that they want to have addressed that we're not addressing, placed on the agenda, but that member will have to speak to those items that are on the agenda. So we are making sure that we are attempting to address everybody's issues or concern. I believe Catherine had mentioned it earlier, but I just want to touch upon this, we've lost two icons of the civil rights movement, John Lewis and C.T. Vivian, both historic figures in pushing various types of legislation for equality purposes. And John Lewis, obviously, you know, the Voting Rights Act, he was the shepherd of that, and hopefully, we can all call our representatives to make sure that the restoration of the restoring of the Voting Rights Act takes place, and I think that that's very important, that we can touch, you know, congressional people, our senators, they're there for us, for our representation, so I would recommend, I would suggest that we call them to make sure that everybody has the right to vote. So I would ask that you would do that. One of the things that I wanted to address as well is, tomorrow is a physical graduation at Dwight Moore High School, and I want to congratulate the graduates on their accomplishment in such unprecedented times, I think that that needs to be recognized as well. I'm going to be asking this group, the council, as well as the city manager, intercity manager that we engaged, the financial committee, once again.
Thank you.
As we start to stroll closer to budget times, to get their thoughts and their feelings, I'm going to also ask Mr. Kaufman to start to give us updates on what's actual versus what's budgeted, those things need to start to take place, because the pandemic has put additional stress on the system, so we need to know where we stand financially, which is important, not only to the council, but to the whole city, they need to understand what our commitment has been made. So with that, I will give it to our acting city manager, or is he sitting in for it? Greg? Fernbough?
I'm here.
I think there's some things that you may want to speak to, Greg?
Well, the items that Jewel and I felt you should be aware of, we've transmitted to you in emails, and it didn't seem as if there was any need to take any time at the meeting regarding that, one of them had to do with the recent directive that came down from the administrative office of the courts, and the other one was a response from Mr. Cool today to Ms. Rosenberg and the rest of you regarding the issue of noise controls in the construction regulations. If there was a specific question you wanted to address, I'd be willing to do that, but those are the items that I know that we had circulated to all of you earlier.
Right, okay. With that being said, Greg, I guess we can move on, Yancy, we can move on to the public session. Each person has two minutes. Name, address, and we're going to stick closely to the two-minute questioning there. Yancy, if it's over two minutes, we stop it.
Okay, I'll raise my phone when the two minutes are up, because I'm timing it.
Okay, that's fair.
So again, for the public, just at the bottom of your screen, the reactions button, press on that, there's a raise hand, press on that, and then it'll show that you're raising your hand, and you'll go in queue, and we'll just call upon you when you're next. First is Diane Jansen.
Hi, again, Diane Jansen, 589 Richland Terrace, thank you, I hope you address the noise of landscapers on weekends, starting before the designated time, and just in general, noise on weekends, as well as construction on weekends, another resident had brought that up, and if we could not have construction on weekends, that would be really great. And today, I had the privilege of being able to hear Reverend Thompson, who spoke about justice, he spoke about charity and justice, and I would like to just say that justice delayed is justice denied, as we all know. When I go past the Liberty School and see Venetian blinds hanging out of broken windows, it is so disturbing to me as a resident, on many levels, the first level is how terrible that makes our city look, and how our city is run, that's number one. Number two, Liberty School, there's been long discussions about having Liberty School be a community center, and if you just let it run into the ground, you don't have it for a community center, do you? And that makes me even sadder, and those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Yancy?
Next is Gabriel Boosbee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, how are you? So I am speaking to express my support for the sidewalk project that has been proposed to run between, I think, Booth Avenue and North Woodland, right? This is a street that many people use to walk, to run, to bike, especially, it's also a very busy street for many people who go to a temple on the Sabbath, and I am basically, again, expressing to the council the importance to approve and to support this project, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
No one else has their hand raised? Again, members of the public, if you wish to speak, at the bottom of your screen.
We have somebody there, Mr. Arbit?
Oh, okay, sorry, just raising his hand.
Yes, yeah, I didn't see that icon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Listen, I agree with Gabriel Boosbee, I live on Johnson Avenue, and it's obviously a project of public safety to put in the sidewalk, you said earlier today that it's been approved, what's the timeframe, and what are the additional hurdles that are present so that it can occur?
Well, the city engineer is not here tonight, he had a personal reason not to be here, so I don't want to speak out of turn in terms of the exact time when that project will be up in full blast, I think that would be not for me to say, I mean, Councilwoman Rosenberg may know a little bit more, because she may have talked to him more recently than I, if she wants to respond to that, she can, because she's on here, but I'll tell you, we are in support of it, and we're looking forward to start shortly, I believe.
I did speak to Franz, the city engineer, and I also know that we're going to be getting a more full picture, the whole council is, as a result of his conversations with this acting city manager at the end of the week, so I'll have a more detailed timeline at the end of this week, or the beginning of next week, but as of a few days ago, it was set to start within a few days to a few weeks, and it was set to be finished by the end of and it was set to be finished by the end of December. In construction terms, it probably means it'll start in a month or two and end, you know, sometime next spring. But that is the timeline that we are hoping to push forward on. Again, a number of people have raised concerns about the trees. We are going to create the sidewalk in a way that it minimizes the amount of trees that come down. We will do a meandering sidewalk around the trees that we can. The trees that must come down, mostly because they have grown into the sewer and are damaging the sewer, we will replace. The city is going to pay to replace and that is part of the budget. So I just wanted to put that out there and thank you to everyone who's given input on the project on all sides. I think that the discussion and the back and forth will make it a project that will really benefit everyone.
Thank you very much. Nancy, who's next?
Mr. Mark Finkel is also just raising his hand in the video.
Hi, thanks. I'm Mark Finkel and I'm on the Engelwood Financial Advisory Committee.
Mark, can you speak up a little bit, please?
You bet. Is this better now?
Yes, better. Thank you.
Terrific. So yeah, I'm on the financial advisory committee. I don't see Adam Brown here, so I guess I'll speak for us. So first, Councilman Cobb, thanks for recognizing the work we've done together. Committee has a mandate to work with the CFO and the city manager to review the budget annually. We're here to be supportive. We're here to add value. So first, I want to commend each and every one of you for what you did for supportive, vastly improved budget process this year. Some important principles followed, like the amount of new debt is less than the debt reduction. They published a five-year plan. You've got it done in terrific time. So really, thank you for good work. I look forward to working with you for the balance this year and working on the budget for next year. As Councilman Cobb said, we'll work with CFO to get some information on the revenue side and the expense side so we can all understand the impact of COVID on the financial health of Engelwood and plan accordingly. We could reserve some time maybe at the August meeting to present something. That would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Nancy, anybody else?
I see a Mr. Michael. Sorry, the print's tiny.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for supporting the sidewalk on the Johnson. It's something that we've been wanting to do for the last 15 years since I moved in. So I appreciate everybody's support of that. And again, if there is a, I know it was said, construction-wise, it's supposed to be done by December. I would encourage to try to keep that timeline. Probably one of those dangerous parts on that street is during the winter, around fall cleanup, because there's a tremendous amount of leaves that go into the street and a lot of traffic that comes up, especially large trucks. So if we could try to maintain that for the safety of our community, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cobb, just for the record, Councilman Cohen has joined the meeting.
I see him.
I just have to.
Anybody else from the public?
I just have to put it in the record.
Yep. Anybody else from the public?
Jonathan Lear?
Everyone, John Lear, I live on Johnson Avenue as well. And I know a lot of people have expressed this already, but I also want to throw in my support for the project. I have three little kids and I'm very much looking forward to be able to just go on walks a lot more safely and avoid the cars. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to go to the next screen. Nobody else?
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
You can give your, you know, your speech to the public now.
Oh, Mr. Cobb, sorry. Did you want to close out the public session first?
Well, yeah, I guess we can close the public session. Now, if nobody else is there, then we'll let Councilman Cohen speak.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Well, we'll close out the public session. We'll give the floor to Councilman Cohen.
I was just, if you can just, I apologize for being a little late today. I was just on another panel which ran a little bit late. If you just let me know, where are we up to in the agenda?
Excuse me? After you speak, we're going in, we're next step will be closed session?
We're in general council comments, correct?
Excuse me. Yep.
I'm in, we're general council comments. Okay, so thank you and thank you, Council President. You know, there was, you know, one other issue that I want to bring up, which I was getting some calls on, which, you know, which I don't think, I think will be a fairly easy thing for us to do, but I think it's important. I was getting some calls regarding laundromats in Engelwood. Apparently, I didn't even realize this, but apparently there's an archaic ordinance that Engelwood has that dates back to actually, I think, before I was born, which for some reason, to which nobody actually knows why, it says laundromats are not allowed to be open on Sunday in Engelwood. But if you look online, every laundromat that's in Engelwood actually advertises that they're open on Sunday, which I don't think we'd want to stop. And I know also that there have been, you know, another potential vendor that was looking to also maybe take over one of the empty stores somewhere in the downtown, but that was a concern. I think, you know, one thing that I would like to be able to, you know, at this point when our meetings are not as frequent during the summer, one thing which I think we should, from a housekeeping perspective, do is maybe put an ordinance together to clean up the ordinance that is technically on the books. Because I don't think, you know, any of the current laundromats that are opening, that are open on Sunday, you know, want code enforcement to come down and shut them down because they're in contradiction to an ordinance, which nobody's really even aware of. So I would, you know, I'll, you know, I'll reach out, I guess, to, you know, the council president and the clerk tomorrow just with some of the details that I've seen and some of the websites that you've seen, some of them that are open. Just, I think it's just important for our local businesses that are operating under the assumption that they are in compliance with our current statute to make sure in such a case where I don't see any reason why that should not be in compliance, to just clean it up so that therefore, you know, current business owners don't find themselves in precarious positions that they're unaware that they're even in. So I would look to, you know, to see if we can just clean that up on a housekeeping level, ordinance-wise. You know, other than that, you know, I just, you know, just thank you very much, thank you everybody for coming on. I apologize. There was a forum this evening on fighting hate, which in my private capacity, I was on, which was a critical discussion and it ran a little late, so I apologize for being late. I just, I think on that kind of issue, it was just critical, you know, to be unfortunately trying to be in two places at once. So thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
With that, Nancy, I believe that's the end of the meeting. Mr. Bailey, I'm going to flip that to you.
Yeah, Council President?
Go ahead. We don't have anything for closed session, right?
No, I spoke to Mr. Doris regarding a memo, a privileged memo, confidential memo regarding some litigation that he sent. He's not available tonight. And I don't know anything really about the case beyond that, what was in his memo. But he welcomed anyone to call him directly in the interim to discuss the memo with any questions or comments or concerns. And beyond that, I didn't have anything for closed session, so we don't really have a need for one.
That was the memo we got right before the meeting, Nancy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If he was available and he could not participate tonight, so. Call him directly, you know, in the interim.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn? Be the motion and second, right? So move. Second. Councilwoman Rosenberg seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Hey, everybody. Everybody be well, be safe.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe and stay cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six liberty.